I will say that I tried to call Doug and we have two people want to give us a couple more minutes or... What did you say? I did try and reach Doug and I didn't get him. I left a voice message on his cellphone. Oh, Doug, yeah. Did you want to give him a couple of more minutes?
Okay, thank you.
Did I get a copy of the budget too?
I did not give you one. I didn't think you wanted one.
Can I have my words for a second? Sorry, I haven't laid down on my desk. You want to do grab my wallet and... That's before I shut the door, you want one? Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I thought we can tell the copies from the original sometimes.
Yeah, we can find it right on the model. Show you up there.
Good.
And up coming up. And be open that everywhere.
Yeah, because...
I could hear when they called in.
I need to...
I thought I could tell them.
I need to...
It's just the ground is so unlevel. Sometimes it gets slippery and it's stuck. It's tough to pull it together. It needs some work.
Well, it's five minutes after. Let's call a meeting. Please stand up.
Counselor, the leaders of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liquidated justice for all.
I'd like to do roll call. Counselor Galusha.
Here.
Counselwoman Harris.
Yes.
Supervisor Sheckler.
Here.
Counselman Brown.
Here.
And let the record show that Counselman Needham is absent at this time.
Thank you. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to go over the resolutions that we need to bring the different accounts into balance for the end of the year. Can I please have somebody introduce a resolution to do budget transfers for the end of the year? Andy, well, thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Randy. All right, resolutions to do budget transfers for the end of the year 2020. Now, I don't know that you've ever done them before.
We, I don't recall the ones last year.
We didn't. We didn't because we couldn't. It was a mess. But this year, because everything is in order and we're trying to close out the year and in preparation for the A U D, we have to balance our budget codes and bring them to at least zero.
So, and I just, I've got a couple of questions, just so I understand. I mean, I thought we were going to get this ahead of time, so we had time to...
No, I told you I wasn't going to email anybody anything, anything to do with financials.
Okay. I disagree with that, but I disagree that you take that approach because there's, I mean, these are budget codes. No, what's anybody going to do with...
That's fine.
But, that being said, so if I understand this correctly, this abstract of general fund townwide detail of expenditures.
From December.
From the end of December.
That you, well, you got this from your December meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
But the ones that are overdrawn in here that show a negative balance is what we're addressing here tonight.
Plus, you also have in your packet, claim number thirteen, claim number fourteen, and claim number fifteen. And let me explain to you a little bit about how this works.
I don't have any of that in my packet. All you gave me was a resolution. And again, you do not give me a full packet, which I am required to have by law. I should have the same packet the rest of the board has.
Well, if you would like to copy these, you can copy these.
Well, it's been a year into the meetings now, and I don't want to have to keep telling you this. I should have the same packet the board has.
No, there's certain things that you...
No, you're wrong. And then sometimes that I have stuff that the board members don't have.
That's fine.
That's the confidential stuff, but I should have a complete record of everything that happens at the meeting, which I don't have.
Anyhow, if I can continue, please.
Well, we need to get her...
I offered her if she'd like to take my copies and make a copy, or she can take your copies and make a copy, whichever.
Which things don't you have?
I don't have... She doesn't have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
So you have this resolution.
And December. She's got the resolution. She has no financials. The town has no record of anything from last year.
Let's wait until she...
In the bottom of the meeting, the one we went through last...
This, the December one?
Yes.
The large one? Yes, this was what we went through. Then, when she, if Susan comes back, I'll go through the rest of it so that it's one time and we have questions to ask at that point. I'm together here at home. Joan, just so you know, that budget that you got there is 2021 budget, not the 2020 budget.
Oh.
It has column for the 2020 adopted.
Thank you.
Hey, before we begin, you can pick it up as more copies.
For the...
I'm happy to.
Yeah, I need to do a copy.
Really? Wow.
Yeah. Well, I made up forty of all.
Hundred copies.
And another twenty-five, thirty, she used to push you. Hey, I'll pick them up in forty.
All right.
So, before we start, I have one other question, just so I, I want to make sure I understand.
Sure.
So, this detail of expenditure from December.
Yes.
That's what shows the balance in each of the budget codes through December 31st?
No, that is not true. That is through our December meeting.
Okay.
And then, this is what I want to explain to you now. After that meeting, we also did in the board approved, except for the food out while they could adjust to, we had number fifteen, number fourteen, and number fifteens. Abstracts, all right, and there are here, all right? So, the top one is going to be your general fund. Your second one, your second page.
Which, which document are you looking at that you're saying?
I am looking right now at number thirteen.
Number thirteen, okay.
Right. So, your first page is your general fund, second page is your highly fund, and your third page is your enterprise fund in number thirteen.
So those are expenditures?
That have occurred.
That have occurred since then?
Yes.
In the end of December and in January?
No, no, just December. This is...
So will we have other expenditures coming in in January?
No, at this point in time, we have to close the book. This is the 27th of December, and this is really the week. We have to close the book before the end of December, before the 30th of December.
So how are, so bills that come in in January of this year?
They can pay.
There are four things that occurred in 2020. How are they reflected?
That's in these, right here, because we've taken them to abstract number fifteen, all right? There, including the bills that have come in.
Okay.
Up until this point. And then, as of the end of the month, anything that comes in for 2020 is automatically paid out in 2021. And it's the same that it was last year too.
Okay, I understand.
I, I don't know how to... I, I, I would say this about being rude. You got to cut them off somewhere, Randy.
I, I, I get that, and that's what I'm just trying to understand the process.
So, these are all December's, I mean, these are all 2020, okay? These three additional abstracts that we have here.
Okay, so where I was headed with my question, where I was trying to go with it. So this that we have for December, they show the balance in each budget code. Shouldn't we have that for, including all these that shows for the entirety of 2020?
No, because these were abstracts that were done after this. What you have to do now, and what I had to do, is you take this one, the general fund townwide detail of expenditures, and then you have to go to your budget code over here, let's say on page, or on number thirteen, abstract number thirteen. This is purely for discussion's sake.
Right.
The first one up here is National Grid eighty-one sixty point four.
Right.
So you got to go find eighty-one sixty point four. Okay. And we can see eighty-one sixty point four is already in the negative.
So...
So we have to add another ninety-five forty to that negative amount. And that was on, um, aspect thirteen.
So where do we get to see what the final balances are?
Balances?
For each budget code.
What we have to do is we have to do these adjustments. And once these adjustments are all done and entered into the system, then, once the year is closed out, then you will get your trial, you will get your budget, you know, what is left over at the end of the year. But until I can close out the budget codes...
So basically, all the budget codes that are on the right, in the right column.
I'm taking money from?
The ones you're taking it from is the left.
I'm sorry?
You, you're taking it from the ones in the left column.
The left column, right, that is correct.
The ones in the right column are presently all overdrawn.
That is correct.
Okay.
And there is nothing overdrawn in the highly department. It's only the general fund and the enterprise fund. And this is to make them whole.
So this is going to zero out the balance on every one of the ones that are overdrawn?
The ones that are overdrawn, yes.
That's, okay, that, I understand that.
Okay. And what I was referencing before, when I said you've got the budget code, you've got them here in your detailed expenditure report, so you really didn't need...
I see that now.
Okay, that's absolutely fine. The town board personnel services is not in the negative. I forgot what happened there. But Williamson Law is making the adjustment to that. It was an error on their part, and they, they zeroed it out. So when you're going forward, that does not need to have any attention to it. The only budget codes that need addressing are the ones that are going to.
Yep, I understood that.
Do you want to go ahead and read the resolution, Susan? You haven't done that yet.
Well, it was introduced by, uh, segmented by Doug. It's a resolution to do budget transfers for end of year 2020. They're doing that. I don't know if they want...
You have to say the, the code. You have to read the resolution.
All right. Well, I'm going to read the resolution, folks. Resolution to do budget transfers for end of year 2020. From A sixteen twenty point one, seven dollars and seventy-five cents, going to A five zero one zero point two, seven dollars and seventy-five cents. From A sixteen twenty point one, three thousand three hundred and seventy-five point seventy-one cents, that's going to A sixteen twenty point four, three thousand three hundred and seventy-five seventy-one. A, it's coming from, so the first number I'm going to read is coming from A six, uh, A fourteen forty point four, five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents is going to A thirteen thirty point four, five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. From A seventy-five fifty point four, fifty dollars, to A eighty-one sixty point four, fifty dollars. From A eighty-eight ten point four, one thousand nine hundred dollars and forty cents, to A eighty-one sixty point four, one thousand nine hundred dollars and forty cents. From A twelve twenty point four, twenty-eight dollars and nineteen cents, to A eighty-one sixty point four, twenty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. From A thirteen fifty-five point four, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents, to A eighty-one sixty point four, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. From A seventy-five ten point four, fifty dollars, to A eighty-one sixty point one, fifty dollars. From A eleven ten point twelve, two thousand three hundred and nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, to A eighty-one sixty point one, two thousand three hundred and nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. From A eleven ten point two, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and three cents, to A eighty-one sixty point one, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and three cents. From A four zero two five point four, ninety-three dollars and five cents, to A fourteen twenty point four, ninety-three dollars and five cents. From A thirty-five ten point four, four hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents, to A fourteen twenty point four, four hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. From A ninety ten point eight, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents, to A ninety sixty point eight, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. From A nine, nine zero three zero point eight, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, to nine zero five zero point eight, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. From A thirty-five ten point four, four hundred and six dollars and forty cents, to A eighty-one sixty point four, four hundred and six dollars and forty cents. And that includes the general fund. And the enterprise fund. We're going from A eleven ten point two, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. A eleven ten point four, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. From fourteen ten point one two, two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. From A fourteen ten point four, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, two hundred and two dollars and fifty-nine cents. From A fourteen forty point four, one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. From A sixteen twenty point one, three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. From A thirty-five ten point four, one hundred and five dollars and five cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, one hundred and five dollars and five cents. From A four zero two five point four, ninety-three dollars and five cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, ninety-three dollars and five cents. From A five one three two point four, one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and three cents, to E eighty-nine eighty-nine point four, one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. And that concludes the enterprise fund. Those are all the transfers that we have to do. Can I, is there any discussion?
Where are the E's and where are the...
Enterprise.
Okay, enterprise, the numbers, so eighty-nine eighty-nine four.
Right, and that is the, um, that is also part of the detail of expenditures for your, um, enterprise fund, Joan. And it shows what was budgeted, what was expended, in, from the balance. And then it shows in here in these abstracts, additional funds that have to be in drawn. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I just can't find the number.
Um, it's the enterprise fund. It's not, it's, it's not in the 2021 budget because we did the budget plan statement for this year.
And the enterprise, we don't have that. Because I don't want to.
Okay.
Now, where they're taking the money from is what they have left over from the...
It's coming from the A fund into the E fund to zero it out.
Doing a mountain of money, the same for their instance, twenty-three hundred dollars is coming out of, uh, the justice. And that's something they had left over from last year?
Yes, that's the money that they have left over and had not expended. If you're referencing, are you referencing the ten, ten twelve?
The moving of the money is all.
Right.
The justice knows that she's not going to have this money this year.
This year, this is 2020. It's done. She has no more money in 2020. This is not the 2021 budget. This is not the 2021 budget.
So she got the twenty-three oh nine, just saying for us, it's twenty-three oh nine.
Yeah.
She had that left over from last year.
Yes, she did.
Nineteen, or actually twelve?
Eight, uh, twenty, twenty.
So she had that left over for twenty?
She did, yep. And it's right in here.
And she, and they don't transfer it to this year?
No.
It goes on balance.
It's a fund balance, but the fund balance isn't developed until after you zeroed out all of your budget codes for this year, and it closed out the year, and then you'd have to do a budget fund balance. Not until.
Yeah.
But this money doesn't carry over from one year to another year to another year.
No, I mean, the eighty-one sixty, most of that would do with the refuge, right, the garbage.
Eighty-one sixty?
Point four and point one.
Hold on. Eighty-one sixty point four is your refuge, yep?
Yeah.
And your point one is your, um, your, um, personnel, your, your payroll.
And we were, did we do that now?
Yes, we were, yeah.
That's not good.
Oh, I know, I know.
I think we'll see a big difference now, you know, always a year ago, but I think we'll, we'll be, we'll, I mean.
But what we bring in doesn't affect the budget.
No, it doesn't, I guess this is why, I'm surprised.
Randy, do you have any discussion?
I will, just let me do more than one thing.
Well, I'm rotating off of garbage, how come that he's taking up so short on average, he'll take care of that? On our budget, budget 21?
In 20, well, 21 has, as I discussed at one of the previous meetings, has presented a new set of problems, because the county did not open bids until, I believe it was December 18th, from the different parking companies. And we have already, at that point in time, completed and turned in our budgets. So, um, the, um, the, the bids that were opened are impacting everybody's budgets significantly this year.
So the garbage is the garbage truck that goes down?
It's the garbage.
Garbage trucks collect it up there.
It's, it's the garbage that is taken down, it is what we have for recycling, it's what we have for electronics at E-Lot. And their prices have gone up for the most part, everybody's, and their hauling cost has gone up significantly. Where we have a saving grace is that we have a garbage truck. And we can collect our garbage, the tonnage has gone up slightly.
The haul's part again.
Well, let's hope, pray it doesn't, because I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's cheaper to run a garbage truck than it is to have the hauling charge.
I don't remember driving, and the tires are falling off. And the moment I did, it stopped and pulled back out.
Yeah, it's still holding up. I think, I think, Joe, with the price increases that we've had, you know, and, and this should have been, you know, I'm not bad on laying, but this should have been done a quarter, two years ago. You keep up with the changing timing of costs, you get rid of it. For years, we never charged for electronics, so that's actually not, it's expensive.
Last year's.
I think this year will be better, this year should be a lot better. I'll watch it a lot closer, see how.
My last few years, probably two years back, or one year back, so. People were bringing garbage up from all over, not paying for what they were supposed to be.
That doesn't happen anymore.
And it's.
I can guarantee you, that's why it doesn't happen.
But that's why I say it's probably off.
And that's also, Jim, why, um, I would like to try and look into some of the grant, to get, um, a scale, because I think the scale would be, uh.
It's a core of the Warrensburg, but do we get as much as Warrensburg, or it would pay for the scale?
If we get a grant, we would need a shake, and that's what I would like to look for. Um, we cannot afford to outright buy the scale at this point in time. So I think if we could look into a grant to see what's available to us, that would be the best way to go about it. But I also think if by having a scale and weighing the verge, I think that's, um, um, how am I, how am I doing this here? That would be more fair to all of the people that are bringing garbage in, so that you're charged for just what you found, not for, you know, nothing.
Some, some people bring, say, a thirteen gallon bag in, and it's pretty light. And the next person might bring one in, it weighs thirty pounds, you can hardly pick it up, so they would be paying, uh, shares for the tax.
They're paying for tonnage as opposed to volume, then?
Yeah, 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 and that doesn't make a difference, the weight of your bag.
So I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, you're, go ahead, you're, we're just talking.
So there're just, there're really two things that I have questions about. Um, we're transferring from buildings, personnel services, sixteen twenty point one, three thousand three hundred and seventy-five seventy-one, to buildings contractual expense. What did we go over in building contractual expense? What caused us to go over three thousand? It's the second item.
Buildings, that is, um, well, uh, we were.
I think I know the answer.
Good here. And then, did you go through and check out what the different codes were here for the, um?
Yep, it's going from buildings, personnel services, to buildings contractual expense.
Right, point four.
I believe, and, correct me if I'm wrong, this is probably directly attributable to store tech.
No, no, because if you'll notice, um, we've got additional bills here, it's not all store tech.
No, I realize it's not, but store tech was something that was not budgeted for in this budget. And we took on an expense that is probably in the neighborhood of twelve thousand, eleven to twelve thousand dollars a year. Because we'll push in a thousand dollars a month in our expenses, and that was not budgeted for.
Last year, that is correct, and we tried to budget for it this year, and you reduced it by ten thousand dollars.
Yep, because I think store tech is.
And we also had the, um, we also had the cleaning company that wasn't planned on, we had a cleaner.
Yep.
But we ended up having to go up to the cleaning company. And then these, we had all these additional expenses here.
Yep, I understand the other expenses, I mean, I sat through the abstracts and we did all those together. I just wanna go on the record as saying that, you know, I believe that's why we exceeded the budget on that specifically, was because of store tech, which was an unbudgeted expense that we had not.
It was last year, you're absolutely right.
Um, my next question is, on page two, five down, we're transferring four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine sixty-one from employee retirement to employee benefits, insurance, medical and hospital insurance. Why did we exceed that code by almost five thousand dollars?
The red line up?
There's another reason.
It's not just because of gales.
How much is an individual's insurance costing us?
That I, I can't answer, I'd have to go back and look at the, um, the pricing.
That issue needs to be addressed.
That's absolutely fine, and I told you I was working on it, and I am. I've got a call into the Labor Department currently, so that should hopefully end this discussion. But we did have an increase in rates?
How many months did we pay for her insurance?
Twelve months.
How many?
Twelve months. She started in January, I do believe it started in January. Either January or February, I have to go back and look at it, but I do believe it was January, I'm not as sure.
So just for the record, at our January eighth organizational meeting, we discussed its various subject. And you, in the minutes, said that you would bring it back in front of the board if you were gonna offer her any benefits. And you did not do that.
That's fine.
And now we've exceeded this budget item code, and you've paid her twelve months.
I'm not as sure to twelve months, Randy, I said it was either January or February. Please stop told me. I would have to go back and look at it.
Yeah.
How are we gonna correct it?
By doing a budget transfer.
No, that simply gets it wiped clean and paid, and it's clean on the books.
Right.
It's still an illegal, illegal gift of polyphons.
Randy, I have a call into the Labor Department. She works thirty hours a week, which I have been told is the legal amount of hours to work to receive full-time benefits.
No, it isn't.
We're not here to discuss, we're here to discuss the budget transfer.
But you want us to transfer money to cover your mistake?
Not my mistake, Randy, not my mistake. And I'm not gonna discuss insurance for anybody at this point in time.
Fine, so we have, but.
This is not, this is what we're here to do, is to transfer funds to close out the year. Like it or not.
So it can't get started in January, because it's under, we're commenting on it, and it might be a problem, and it might be illegal. So it cannot do it in January, that money cannot be transferred to her in January?
I don't transfer any money to her.
While she can't get the benefit, let's go to that one.
That's your opinion.
And she should pay back what she was spending.
That is your opinion, and you're entitled to it.
Thank you very much for that, that was all right, I'm, I'm.
Glad you liked it.
I appreciate that, I have to get that credit from you.
Glad you liked it. So, do we have any further discussion in regards to these budget transfers? Karen, then, can we please have a roll call vote?
Supervisor Shepler?
Yes.
Councilman Galusha?
I abstain.
Councilwoman Harris?
No.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Well, it is a tie, and I want the board to be fully aware.
It's not a tie.
Well, you're abstaining.
You have to have three votes regardless of how many people are here or whether to pass or reject.
I understand that, but it's, you're abstaining, Doug is absent, Joan is voting no. Please be advised that we cannot close the books by the end of January, and the ABD will not be done in time. And it's not.
And the other two?
I don't care about the other two at this point in time, the important thing is, is to get this one completed. And you're, you're obstructing us from doing that at this point in time.
Sofia?
Sofia. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Ed? Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Meeting is adjourned.
Do you think you have all the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Okay.
I mean, you're welcome to bring this up at the next meeting and let, don't.
I don't have the opportunity to wait until, I can call another meeting for the end of this week. But frankly, that would be February, and that would really be taking me on my meeting call. There's no reports coming to anybody in February, because I can't close out the year for this year. So, does the board wanna meet again before the end of this month? So that we can hopefully get this rectified?
I'm not wasting my time to come in and, and do this again.
I'm sorry, it's a waste of your time.
No. You're asking us to clean up your mess.
No, Randy, it's not my mess.
It is.
No, Randy, it's not my mess. Oh, thank you. Can I have your folder, please? I can keep the items?
Keep the items?
Yep. Could you bring that back to me? The, um, those?
I will, I have copies for everybody, and I like the copies on the others.
I have the fountain from the others, you want one of those fountains to me so far, they have their copies.
Well, tonight I can give it to you, but I gotta take time to put it back in the boardroom. That's why I take copies.